Good evening, it's Stonecrest. Welcome to the city council meeting of Monday, September twenty-two, twenty twenty-five. The time now is six fifteen. Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind to give us your call, please?
Sir, good evening, everyone. Mayor Jasmine Cobble.
Present.
Councilmember Tara Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Fai.
Present.
Councilmember Alicia Washington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim, George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Stonecrest, this evening we have with us from the First St. Paul AME Church, located in Lathonya, Georgia, Dr. Doctor. Is that right, Dr. Doctor? Dr. Doctor Marvin Crawford to give us our inspiration and words of wisdom this evening. Make sure that little green button comes up. Yes.
Green button is on. Good. Thank you for allowing me to come to be with you all just briefly for a few minutes. Now, only inspiration I will speak to a group about is, you say, what happened in a nation that disturbs us all? And I think we have to put our hand and say, it's the violence. It's the threat of the violence all around us. But what do we do as a people when there's violence all around us? And I think one of the pieces in the book of Thessalonian Dad, the fifth chapter down by the twenty-third verse, and Paul simply says that, may the God of peace sanctify you through and through. And it went down a little further in the verse to simply say, that this God of peace who sanctifies you, he will be with you and he will do it. And I assume, and I assume, and I pray that we all will accept the fight, though in spite of all what happened around us, that the God of peace is with us and we can be safe and still can function as a people and keep citizens like Stonecrest going forward and save our citizens. So that is my word for tonight. Let us pray. God, I thank you and God, I praise you. I thank you, God, that you're the God who made it all. You're the God who put us here. You're the God of our story. You're the God of our future. You're the God that gives us his wisdom. You're the God that give us his faith. And we pray on this night that you're the God who will be with us and bless us as we hunger and thirst for righteousness. And so now, God, those who lead us, I pray, God, for each of them, give them wisdom and give them courage to face these challenging days. Troubles on one hand, but faith on the other hand. Hate on one hand, but they have the love that you're giving them on the other hand. Disruption on one hand, but they have organization on the other hand. So now, God, bless them to lead us and to guide us. And as citizens, God, let us, God, find ways to help them to be their best selves. I thank you and I praise you for this day. And you ever last the name, we pray, everybody say, amen.
Amen. Let us stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marvin Crawford, will you come back to the podium, please?
I hope you're bringing me a chick.
Normally, the mayor would come up and give you a big old hug, but I'm standing in. On behalf of the city of Stonecrest, we want to present you this small token of appreciation where you're coming out this evening to give us words of inspiration. And normally, we try to get someone who's local who come to us. And every once in a while, we get the real big people to come in. And again, thank you so much for giving us your time and words of inspiration. And do come back.
Thank you, good God. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, my church is in Lathonya and Stonecrest.
Ah, let us not forget it.
We got dual citizenship. Thank you.
I'm all invited. Counsel, the next thing you have on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. You have it before you. Any changes, corrections, additions?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Like for us to remove the proclamation for tonight, and let's move that to our October meeting.
That's a proclamation for National Service Dog Month?
Yes, sir.
Will that month be moved as well?
The dogs serve all year, so we'll celebrate them in October.
All right. Any other corrections? Or changes? You are none, would entertain a motion for approval with the changes?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilwoman Washington?
No, that wasn't Washington that time.
Sounded like Washington.
No, and I was trying to sound like her. No, it's me.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Yes. I make motion that we approve our September twenty-second city council meeting agenda with the stated change.
Second.
You're proud of the second to approve the September twenty-second council meeting with the stated changes. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, the motion is signify by saying aye. Opponents, they start with District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four is aye. District Five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. You've had time to review it. Any corrections? You are none, sustain the motion for approval.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilwoman Graves.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the city council meeting for August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
It's been proposed in second to approve the meeting minutes from the August twenty, twenty-five, I'm sorry, from the August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion was signify by saying aye. Opponents, they start with District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four is aye. District Five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The minutes are now approved for August twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind to read the rule for public comments, please?
Citizens wishing to make a public comment may do so in person. Citizens may also submit public comments via email to cityclerk@stonecrestga.gov by two PM on the day of the meeting to be read by the city clerk. All members of the public wishing to address the city council shall submit their name and the topic of their comments to the city clerk prior to the start of any meeting held by the city council. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker submitting or reading a public comment. Individuals will be held to those established time limits.
Thank you very much. First speaker, please.
Fay Colfield.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Fay Colfield, three, two, six, one, Chaperal Way, Stonecrest. And tonight, I want to talk to you about a change that I hope you'll make. Last week, Newbirth came with their presentation on what they want to build on Woodrow and Lathonya Industrial. And they came like every developer should come who comes to you. They brought the plans, they brought the developer, they brought the finance people, they brought everybody associated with that program so that we could see what they had, so that we would know that they had the money and we would know the timeframe for what they're going to do. That's something very important, because we get a lot of people come up in here and it look like they go to Home Depot and rip out one of those books and bring houses and things in here. So I do hope that you will make that the standard for what happens in the future. Second of all, I'm sure you're aware of the controversy about this housing development. They want to build over off of Rock Springs and it's supposed to be landlocked because the owner sold some property and didn't get a right of access. And now we find out that that subdivision there on Rock Springs is about a fifth completed. They didn't even have the required second driveway because apparently you have to have two driveways to a subdivision. So now they've cut one in. That's something that code enforcement or building and planning should have picked up a long time ago. Most importantly, we're seeing a large increase of homeless sitting around and camped out on Pinola Road. Now, that is not the response. Y'all all know I'm retired police sergeant. That is not the responsibility of the Cab County Police. That is the responsibility of that property owner. And he can do something about it if he wants to do something about it. And I guarantee you, if you interview those people, they were dropped here. They did not get on MARTA with those shopping carts and tents. They were brought here by, let's put it this way, somebody with the ability to bring them here. And lastly, as we approach elections session, election day, I hope you'll be able to answer the three questions, those of you who are running. And that is, what have you done? What are you doing? And how do you plan to fulfill your campaign promises? Thank you very much, and y'all have a good day.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next.
Renee Kell.
Good evening, everyone. I just had a quick comment about our zoning laws, ordinances. I really respectfully request that when petitions come before you for slops, variances, whatever land zoning developers want to change, that you carefully look at what they're doing to our communities. The zoning laws are put in place to have compatible land use, projects that promote higher property values, equitable property values. And also, the laws are put in place to enhance our quality of life. Also, to promote community development, manage growth, and preserve our community's character. So you all, you will be getting some requests that are not reasonable, don't fit the character of the areas, and that are really going to disturb the residents of Stonecrest. So please look carefully, and the residents will help in any way that we can to make sure that our communities continue to be safe, aesthetically sound, and environmentally healthy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Regia Bell.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Bell. I am not a politician, nor am I a person who does this often. I moved here from Nashville, Tennessee, so I've been here since twenty eighteen. I am a member, I live out in the Belmont Hills location. There was a shooting on the eighth of September, maybe the ninth. My days are kind of mixed up. But I would like to just say that I want to thank the policemen who patrolled our area, that showed up, that provided service timely and professionally. And I want to say that we've never had anything like that to happen out at our community. I'm not speaking for the community. I'm speaking for a person who live in that community. And I would just like to say thank you to the officers. Thank you for allowing them to come out and patrol. I am a senior citizen, so I know that it's important for us to have protection. And because I live there, I may not, I'm not speaking for the entire community, but I believe if anything that happened at your community, you're responsible for showing appreciation to those who provide a service. So I just want to say thank you to the police officers that showed up the night of the incident, that they were professional, they were diligent, and they carried out their duties with promptness and respectability. I want to say that I thank each officer for their professionalism. And even though I was not at home when the incident happened, I am a neighbor, and I think that each person should show appreciation to the police officer who was there. I moved there in twenty eighteen, and we've never had anything like that to ever happen. And I just want to thank you, thank the police officers, and I hope they continue to control the area. Thank you very much for letting me have this opportunity.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next. Go ahead.
Dear Mayor and councilmembers, I am writing to respectfully request that you, before taking any actions related to data centers, the city of Stonecrest commit to complete and thorough research on how these facilities impact the communities, particularly here in DeKalb County. Data centers are not just another warehouse. They bring unique challenges and opportunities that must be clearly understood upfront. Infrastructure and utilities verify electric loads, substation needs, backup diesel generation, and grid resilience. Coordinate with Georgia Power, DeKalb Watershed, and emergency management on power reliability, water sewer capacity, and stormwater. Two, public health and environment, access noise, air emissions from generators, heat output, twenty-four-seven operations, and tree loss require stronger buffers, setbacks, and environmental protections. Three, public safety and surefire and emergency services are trained and equipped for high-energy electrical and battery systems with clear emergency response plans. Four, traffic and construction, model long-term construction, traffic, heavy equipment routes, and water wear and require restoration agreements. Number five, economics and land use, carefully evaluate fiscal impact, long-term job creation, and whether dedicating industrial land to this low employment use is in Stonecrest's best interest. Given these considerations, I respectfully ask that council commission an independent impact analysis specific to Stonecrest and DeKalb County hold structured community engagement sessions to review findings and proposed conditions, and adopt clear performance standards in any ordinance or text amendment, including enforceable limits for noise, stormwater, buffers, and generator operations. Require community benefits agreements to ensure residents see tangible returns from large-scale projects. Stonecrest deserves growth that is smart, transparent, and community first. By doing the homework now, the city can avoid costly mistakes and secure better outcomes for our residents. Thank you for your service and consideration. Sincerely, Donna Priest Brown, District Three.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Anyone else? Did we omit anyone wishing to make public comments? And that ends public comments for this evening. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilman Fai.
May I have two minutes to respond to Ms. Bell?
Say oh, sir.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim. Ms. Bell, thank you so much for giving a public comment on behalf of Belmont, excuse me, Ms. Rosa Bell, correct? Ms. Bell, thank you so much for responding and coming out and representing your community on Belmont Hills. It's so important when we have constituents, when an incident happens, coming out to alert council of the impact, the response time, especially when it comes down to our partners in DeKalb County. I wanted to let you know that, again, the city was, the city became aware the night of the incident. And I wanted to just highlight your fantastic city manager, who came out when she heard about the incident, actually made sure to get in contact with DeKalb County to ensure that you all had the routine and the, made sure that you guys had the routine police officers in the area for the next few weeks. So I just wanted to say, and again, your mayor, actually, who I also forgot, also got into that, actually made sure to actually, that you all had the routine officers to make sure that you had that. Again, we thank you all so much for the patience and for coming out to inform us of that issue and things like that should never happen in Stonecrest. We appreciate you all for being neighbors and continuing to communicate with us, and please let us know if you have any other issues. Again, my email is tfye, that's thanks for your eggs, at stonecrestga.gov. Please let me know if you have any questions, comments, or things that we can do better to continue to provide you the service that you need. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. And Ms. Cowie, unless I overlook something, there is nothing on the agenda for a public hearing this evening? Thank you very much. So we will skip the rules for public hearings, since we have no public hearing this evening. No consent agenda, appointments, and announcements, council? Dr. Crawford, again, thank you for coming out. All right. The next item on the agenda would be for reports and presentation, and we just removed the National Service Dog Month, and I have one that's coming up. And that's a proclamation for the Collet Green Festival. And that is real. It's a real event, and I would invite you out to attend. It will be on Saturday, September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, at five-one-nine-seven Salem Road at the First African Church. Started at twelve o'clock, going to seven PM. And we will offer a proclamation at that time, and whereas it starts out, and I won't read the whole thing, whereas the mission of the annual colored green cultural festival is to celebrate traditions, culture, and historical contributions of African-Americans while promoting family unity and the importance of healthy eating and living for well-being of future generations. And that we will deliver this to the organizers of this seventh, sixteenth annual festival on that date. If you can be there, we'll look for you and tell your friends about it. Thank you so much.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilman Fai.
I'm so sorry. Could you repeat that date? I am not a fan of vegetables, but I will still try to show my support.
They have colored green ice cream for you, sir.
Oh.
Yeah, I kid you not. Don't knock it till you try it. The date is next Saturday, September twenty-seven, starting at twelve noon, going into seven PM. That's at five-one-nine-seven Salem Road, the First African Church. Okay? Next item on the agenda is old business. For decision and ordinance for the amendment of the charter of the city of Stonecrest, second read. Councilman Fai.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, and I look forward to having that ice cream next Saturday. So council, as we have talked through, been through, and kind of rehashed through the last, I want to say, two months regarding our home rule amendment for the charter, for the charter, excuse me, regarding this ordinance for the amendment of the Stonecrest City Charter. We've been talking about this for a while regarding our amendment for the internal auditor to basically allow this council to be able to continue its duty to provide transparency when it comes to our internal processes. Again, this amendment simply adds a, adds a few requirement, adds a few additional abilities for us to be able to hire a contractor or an FTE to be able to, to be able to serve in that city auditor, that internal auditor role, as well as kind of amend the requirements for us to be able to hear those, hear those audits. So again, this has been before, as at our work session back in July, I mean, excuse me, our work session back in early August, the council meeting in August, and as well as has been before you, for the final time of this meeting, this is the decision day. So we have worked very hard to make sure that this ordinance is ready and prepared for you all, in line with all the laws. Again, just for the public, we have gone through and made sure that this has been in the county, the county, the county, the county newspaper, as well as on common ground news, just to make sure that people have the opportunity to see that we are changing our charter in this way and using our home rule powers to go through. So we are effectively, again, as we talked about in multiple meetings, simply changing the charter requirement under three point, and I'm just, three point one-two, just to be able to allow, just to be able to allow us to hire a contractor or FTE for our internal auditor role, amending our requirements to have us hear those auditor requirements, not quarterly, but biannually. We are still able to hear them quarterly if the council so chooses, but it can't be less than biannually. If I'm available for any questions, if we need, but I look forward to passing this ordinance. I just want to say a thank you to our legal team, Alicia Thompson, for the help on this, on putting the craft in this ordinance, city clerk's office for being able to hear it, and just all over, and also Councilman Grimes for her, for bringing this up and also for the amendments to this ordinance. So again, after this, after we, if we are to pass this today, this will go to the Superior Court in DeKalb County and also to the city clerk's office, so that we may stay in record. But I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Comments? And again, this removes a restriction more than anything else that we had, kind of put us in a corner in terms of what we couldn't, who we couldn't bring on board.
Absolutely. And this restriction was very, it basically put us in a bind to where we were only allowed to hire an FTE, when previously in our previous charter, we were allowed to do both. Because of this, we've been, we've had, ooh, incorrect. We weren't, we weren't allowed to do both in the previous. So my apologies, but effectively allows us to be able to act throughout our duties, gives us multiple options to be able to ensure that we are hearing internal audits, and it just takes off a little bit of a requirement when it comes down to quarterly. Again, we're allowed to do both. We're allowed to do both quarterly, annually, biannually, or weekly, or even every work session. It just depends. We just made those slight amendments.
Thank you. Mayor Cobble? Oh, good. Madam City Clerk, second read, please.
Home Rule Ordinance to amend the Charter of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia, to amend Article Three, Executive Branch, Section three point one-two, City Internal Auditor, to provide for codification, to provide for severity, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to provide an adoption date, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes allowed by law.
Thank you very much, counsel. That's a hearing and reading of the second reading of the ordinance. What is your pleasure?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilman Fai.
I move to approve the ordinance for amendment, for amendment to the Charter of the city of Stonecrest, second read.
Second.
It's been proposed in second to approve the ordinance for amendment to the Charter of the city of Stonecrest, second read. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion were signified by saying aye. Opposes nay, start with District One.
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four is aye. District Five?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Mayor Cobble?
May I mention that next steps, um, to, um, one, send the amendment to the state office, Madam City Clerk? Um, if you'll work with legal to ensure that we send the amendment to the state office. Um, and then also, we, um, need to work city manager with, uh, legal to update, uh, the current charter document and to put the updated document on our website and any other place that we're storing the official version of the charter.
There is the process. Thank you very much. Next item. Next item on the agenda is for decision, an order for personnel adjustment, second read. City Manager Scruggs.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The purpose of this ordinance was to reclassify, create, and fund positions to further the operations of the city, uh, related to administration, human resources, facilities, finance, municipal court, and, uh, parks, recreation, and cultural affairs. This request is for the newly created, uh, requested positions of an assistant fin- assistant human resource director, uh, in the human resource department and a facilities operations coordinator in our facilities, uh, division. In municipal court, the request is to fund the position of clerk of court. Finance is also requesting to reclassify and create the positions of purchasing specialist one, purchasing specialist two, purchasing specialist three, revenue specialist one, revenue specialist two, and revenue specialist three, to show progression in the department. Additionally, in our parks and recreation department, we are asking to convert two of our part-time park ambassador positions to one full-time park ambassador position. The funding for these positions, uh, is shown in the budget adjustment that is, um, in the packet.
Complete?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, questions? Comments? Councilman Grimes.
You know. City Manager, will you just remind me again, we're taking two part-time to make one full-time at the park?
Yes, ma'am. We are taking, currently, we have four park ambassador positions. We are combining two of those part-time positions to make one full-time park ambassador position, and then you'll still have two additional part-time positions. Just want to be clear.
Anyone else?
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Graves.
Thank you.
Madam City Manager, can you explain the, the notes? I see that we are, it says unfunded position. The total is fifteen thousand?
Unfunded? I'm not sure, uh, where you, where you.
The notes that you have in the packet, in the packet?
I'm sorry, I, that was.
You said what document? Mid-year adjustment?
What, yes. On the notes, I'm looking, I'm at the notes now, um.
It's the last, um, attachment. The F Y twenty-five mid-year budget adjustment?
Yeah, the notes came out on a separate page, and it says new under, unfunded position to show consistency within the department. Um, because it's not all on one page, let me see if I can, um, give me just a moment, let me see if I can tell you which line that goes with on the previous page. It's the procurement specialist three position, if I'm reading that across correctly. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yes, that, um, position was not previously funded, if I'm reading that correctly. We previously had a, um, purchasing coordinator and one, um, purchasing specialist. We're reclassifying two of tho- those two positions and essentially, uh, unfunding and creating a purchasing specialist position as well. So it'll be three, all, it'll be three levels of a purchasing specialist, and basically, we have unfunded one of those positions in order to create those, those three that you see.
So the total adjustment? Or the reclassifying? Is the total of fifteen thousand that you're amending to the budget?
Uh, y- yes. So, once we put them on the, on the, put, reclassify those three positions, um, if you look on the adjustment and see the salary range for those positions, we are anticipating, um, it being a slight increase of, increase of up to about five thousand dollars, and that is coming from the budgeted overtime for those positions. So, in, in essence, it's really not a, in, asked for an increase, it's basically moving the lines from the overtime to the salary line. And that's just for the remainder of this year. The full, if this is passed, the full, um, salary line will show in, will be reflected in the F Y twenty-six budget.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor Protem?
Mayor Cobble?
Just want to make a note that the council's already approved the amendments to F Y twenty-five budget, but it only took one read. The only reason why we're doing this second read is because our policies and law require a second read, um, for this, for the F T Es, but the budget that goes along with this has already been approved.
But we still have a chance to amend if we find that there's something that's not right, I believe.
Yes, you could certainly put an amendment to the amended budget on a future meeting, yes, but then I would obviously advise you not to pass this, and then go back to the amended budget that you've already amended and approved. Yeah.
All of them. Anyone else? Here and none. Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind as to give us a second read, please?
An ordinance by the mayor and city council of the City of Stonecrest to amend the City of Stonecrest pay and classification plan so as to provide for certain position changes and other personnel actions in line with the F Y twenty-twenty-five budget and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. Counsel, after hearing the second read, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Protem, just a bit of unreadiness. I have one more question.
Say on.
City Manager, will you give me the pay grade for the very first, um, position, the Assistant Human Resources Director?
The pay grade for the Assistant Human Resource Director is twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Cobble?
Just for context, the, in case the public is trying to find that same document in the first attachment, uh, to the second attachment to the agenda, uh, in the exhibit, you'll see the positions, their salaries, their pay grade, the accounting string, and the F T listed there.
Thank you very much. Counsel, you've heard the reading of the ordinance. It was open to action. What is your pleasure? We can approve, deny, or defer?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Graves?
To approve the ordinance for the personnel adjustment.
Second.
This is probably moving in second to approve the ordinance for personnel adjustment, second read. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion were signified by saying aye. Opposes nay, start with District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four is aye. District Five?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is for decision, approval of the E V charging stations, Georgia Power, uh, Make Ready Program acceptance letter, and Enviro Spark agreement. Mr. McCord?
Yes, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Counsel. Uh, we're very excited this evening to, um, put this item before you. We've been working on this for a very long time. Uh, in southwest Georgia, they say if you see a turtle on a pole, he didn't get there by himself. So this evening, I want to, uh, recognize the people that helped put this turtle on the pole, and that would be, uh, Madam, uh, City Manager, uh, Harry, our city engineer. We had, uh, Mr. Hawkins, uh, in our finance department, uh, Ms. Gaines, the finance director. Uh, we had Director Q, Ms. Boynton, uh, the purchasing manager. We had Ms. Alicia Thompson, and we also, uh, have our partners who are here with us tonight, one from Georgia Power, Mr. Reginald Ward, and Mr. Michael Calhoun with Enviro Spark. And of course, we also had Mr. Turner, last but not least. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Yes, I wanted to recognize everyone who contributed to this, uh, process. We have been working on this since December. Uh, they say the wheels of government move slow, but in this case, in Stonecrest, it moves pretty swiftly. So, uh, we're here tonight, um, to ask for your approval. Just to give you some, uh, background, the city, uh, applied to participate in Georgia Power's Make Ready Program. Um, this program, uh, will invest and own and maintain the, uh, make, make-ready, uh, charging infrastructure, meaning that, uh, they will develop the electrification, um, infrastructure that will provide the, uh, energy for the charging station. In order to achieve a zero out-of-pocket cost to the city, uh, we, uh, partnered with Enviro Spark, and we're recommending approval of, uh, that agreement tonight. And so, uh, under that agreement, again, uh, there's no direct cost to the city, and, uh, Enviro Spark will, uh, install the chargers and take care of ongoing maintenance and support for the chargers. And, um, so, so tonight, uh, staff is recommending, uh, the council approve the Georgia Power Electric Transportation Make Ready Program Acceptance Letter, uh, and approve the Enviro Spark Network, uh, Charging Station Installation and Service Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? No questions in the, let me understand that, um, the letter and the agreement are separate items here?
Yes, sir.
And if there are complications with this, we have an out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, the item is before you.
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Graves?
So as I, um, last remember, um, Deputy City Manager, Mr. Enviro, Mr. Michael, no.
Yes, that's right. Mr. Calhoun.
Mr. Calhoun, uh, made the statement that you all would be, that they would be taking care of the equipment, yes? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that did not change and will not change. Okay, all right. And so my next question is, Madam City Manager, when we do, if this is approved tonight, the agreement and the acceptance letter, when do they meet and when does this go live? When, when will it, like, yeah, take place?
It, it should be effective.
Immediately?
You approve the, um, this recommendation, yes.
Okay. Just don't want no lag time, because I'm excited about this. Okay, that's it. Nothing else.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel, entertain the motion for action.
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Graves?
I make motion that we approve the E V charging stations, Georgia Power Make Ready Program Acceptance Letter, and the Enviro Spark Agreement. Second.
This is probably moving in second to approve the E V charging station, Georgia Power Make Ready Program Acceptance Letter, and Enviro Sparks Agreement. Are you ready for the question? Madam City Manager, unreadiness, what do we? I'm sorry. I see the train over there. I'm talking out my other ear. Madam City Attorney?
I'm noticing in the, um, document that's attached to the agenda, um, that we need to have an updated version just to reflect, um, a request that was brought up by Councilman Grimes in the last meeting. We did, um, speak to Enviro Spark, and they did negotiate those, um, liquidated damages down from one fifty to one hundred dollars. Yes, so, and, um, we just need to make sure that we'll, um, have that version signed.
Okay, make it clear, and, uh, we will adjust the motion accordingly. So, there was a motion made at the, well, a comment or motion made in the last meeting to adjust it from one fifty down to one hundred?
They, they agreed to.
Okay. Councilwoman Graves, you understand the request for the adjustment in the motion?
Give me the specific name of that charge again. That was the?
The amendment to the liquidated damages provision.
Liquidated, liquidated.
Just says, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna say it again in just a second. You ready, Mayor Protem?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Say on.
I make motion that we approve the E V charging stations, Georgia Power Make Ready Program Acceptance Letter, and Enviro Spark Agreement with the amended or updated liquidation damages amount, provision. With the updated liquidation damages provision from one fifty to one hundred.
A second?
This is probably moving in second, um, to approve the E V charging station, Georgia Power Make Ready Program Acceptance Letter, and Enviro Sparks Agreement with the amended liquidation clause from one fifty to one hundred. Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Counsel?
No.
Yes, thank you. Um. So probably moving in second, uh, for this, and, uh, all those in favor of the motion were signified by saying aye. Opposes nay, start with District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four is aye. District Five?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem?
Mayor Cobble?
Next step question, City Manager or Deputy City Manager, who signs these letters? Is it me or the City Manager?
I will defer to, uh, Madam Thompson.
I think, yeah, you or, um, Madam City Manager can sign.
Let's see, which one?
Both of you.
Is that a place for both of you to sign? We're, we're, we're get it.
Or, no problem. I'll do it. If you'll, if somebody will get the corrected version over to the clerk's office and sign if you'll, um, try to get that to me before the week is out.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is for decision, the contract amendment for the twenty-twenty-five street resurfacing. Director Gaines?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Um, this is the item we discussed in the last meeting. Um, we didn't have the proper documents when we came last time, and, and then, um, our purchasing department has prepared the contract amendment, and our, um, law department has. and now our Law Department has reviewed that, and we are back to you for that 2025 street paving contract amendment to add additional streets. And the original contract had 20.37 lane miles, and this amendment will add 6.28 additional lane miles to that contract. And view, just to give you an update, contractor is going to wrap up the last few streets Wednesday, Thursday. And if this contract amendment is approved tonight, they will bring back the milling machine on Thursday and start milling those two subdivisions that, in this amendment, from Thursday. And they are all planning, if it is approved, to wrap it up. You know, end of this month to the first week of lockdown, where that's the plan, yeah.
Thank you. Also included in this amendment is a budget adjustment to cover the additional cost, which totals $324,482.04. That's for the additional streets and for the change order, which is for a?
Yes, that is on District Two, Hillvale. We discussed that previously, to build the shoulder on both sides before the, between Covington Highway and the bridge, that is in bad shape.
So both the contract amendment and the budget adjustment is attached for your review. That concludes.
So everything's in order?
Yes, sir.
We're good to go. All right, I have some more comments, but I'm going to just say, let's just get it done and keep moving, because I understand the contractor is finishing up on one job and ready to move to the next one without any interruption, which would be costly to shut down and start up again. So we have to see this moving forward. Counsel, any other comments, questions?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
Just want to make sure that we are still having the, for lack of a better term, the quality control people come behind to make sure that everything is done decently and in order, and we don't have that flubber, flubber, flubber like we do still have on Salem Road because of whatever happened. But just want to make sure that somebody is there to, what do you call that person?
Mayor Pro Tem, if I may?
Madam City Manager?
Yes, Councilwoman Grimes, we do have a full-time FTE that is a construction site inspector, that each day they go out and look at what is being done and also get the tickets from the vendor. So we have someone who does that.
Okay, because I know that was not someone from Stonecrest who was doing it originally. Yeah, okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions or comments?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilwoman Graves?
Thank you, I just want to confirm that the budget amendment, the funds for the budget amendment, the $324,482?
Yes, ma'am.
That's being moved from the sidewalk project?
Yes, ma'am, that's being moved from the sidewalk project to the resurfacing.
Would that delay the side?
Madam City Manager?
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Graves, the reason we chose that particular project to move the funding is because we are currently in the design of those sidewalks, and we anticipate it being, I believe, in the second quarter of next year before we get to the construction phase. And at that time, we believe that we will have the additional funding back from another source to be able to not have any delay in the design and construction of those sidewalks.
And without going into the details of it right now, I know we should be re-collecting L-MIG once the audits are all in place, and that is funding that we have traditionally used to augment our resurfacing, is that true?
L-MIG is a funding source, has been a funding source for our capital improvement program in previous years.
Okay, so that is, hopefully, once these audits are complete, a source of some funds that we can use for resurfacing.
It is a revenue.
To reimburse funds that have been transferred from one to another.
It has been a revenue source in the past.
Okay, good, I'll accept that for now.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
Was Councilwoman Graves finished?
Say that again?
Were you finished? I'm sorry.
Finished, Councilwoman Graves.
Okay. City Manager, Harry, both of you, did we not talk about LRA grant and funding?
We did, and the staff and the finance has determined that in order to move this forward at the rate we feel comfortable, we are recommending that you take the funds from sidewalk construction.
But when we do that, when we get that LRA money completely deposited, we can move that back to that piece?
When the city receives those funds and comes back to council stating that we have, we are accepting those funds, we will likely give you a recommendation as to what we anticipate doing with those funds.
Okay, because I went home thinking that we were going to move some money, but we were safe because we were going to get that LRA money and put it back. So I, I, I'll wait until you bring that recommendation, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
In my other life, I learned that once you get what you want, stop talking and move on. But anyway, Mayor Cabo?
Good motto. The, I think, I'm going to restate what the City Manager said with a few different words. The sidewalk construction was funded in our capital improvements budget for '25, but we will not be at the point of construction before the calendar, before the fiscal year ends in '25. So in a nutshell, that 324 would just roll into fund, into, I'm not going to call it fund balance, because it's not the fund balance of the general fund, but it would just roll over to the next year, right? So instead of allowing that to just roll over, because it will be unspent funds, we're going to spend those funds in '25 so that they're not in some reserve status going into future years. It's not the sidewalk design, it's the sidewalk construction. We will have the sidewalk design done by this calendar year end, but not the construction. So instead of allowing the 324,000 to go into some savings status for future years, we decided to use it this year for this purpose because paving, this amendment to your paving was extremely important to you. And so when we get to FY '26, which we have given a proposed capital improvement budget already in our tips meeting, you will see that we have already funded the sidewalk construction. As we receive more capital improvement funds throughout the FY '26 calendar year, they are not obligated just yet. So as we get the LRA funds and any other future L-MIG grants or any other grants that we get in as revenue, we will put that into our capital improvements budget, and then, of course, the council will decide what projects they want to fund with those additional resources. But it is not always a aye for an aye or a one for a one. If you decided to use LRA for something else, you certainly can, as long as it's, of course, advised by the grant regulations. It does not have to replace particularly this sidewalk construction, as long as it's for capital improvements. So as we left this work session, and we asked you to let staff go back and figure out where is the best place to pull these funds, this was the recommendation from the sidewalks construction, because otherwise, that money would just have sat there and rolled over to future years.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilman Fa.
Mayor and City Manager, out of curiosity, what would happen if we pulled this from surplus instead?
You don't have a capital improvement surplus. Your, your reserve or fund balance is in the general fund.
Yes, ma'am. So if we were to pull from general fund and the, and the surplus, you know what I mean? If we were to pull from that funding, will we not be able to reimburse out of that, out of that general?
I would not, no, we wouldn't, no. The recommendation, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, sorry.
That would not be what we would recommend for a couple of reasons. It's two separate funds is one. Secondarily, the contingency that we have in general fund is typically designed for unforeseen things that we have go on on the other side operationally. And I would like to ensure that we keep that intact for the remaining four months of this year, because we also have some things that we may, believe that we may end up using that. We have chosen this with some very certain terms, knowing where we are in terms of the design and construction, and we are very comfortable making this recommendation to council to ensure that we have funding available when we do get to the construction of the sidewalks. And it's really based on timing and the funding available.
Well, we could if we wanted to.
You could, it would be highly, it would be not a high recommendation. We would probably give you another 20 or 30 minutes on why we shouldn't do that. We would probably encourage the other members of council not to vote for that. And not just, I mean, obviously, the City Manager just gave an explanation, but also this 324,000 would just be sitting in your capital improvements budget unspent. So it, it would be very hard to justify taking funds from an operational fund to do capital improvements when you have the capital improvements funds just sitting in the capital improvement fund.
Mayor Pro Tem?
May I say that we set out to achieve a goal, and I think that is before us, and we could move on and debate this later. We got what we came to make happen, and I think it was done with a lot of input from a lot of people who've made sure that it is done in decent order. But you, Madam City Manager?
Mayor Pro Tem, respectfully, I fully stand behind the recommendation that staff has put forth before council.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
And that, and could you remind me, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem?
Sorry, go ahead.
Madam City Manager, could you remind me kind of the reason why we didn't spend, and why we didn't go with that, that sidewalk, that? I'm thinking the term, I know it. Harry, you gotta help me. Hill and Hillvale Road, the sidewalk, the shoulder, the shoulder, the shoulder construction out of, what were some of the questions that we had about the shoulder construction with constructing that, constructing that already? Just pulling it out of, out of City Manager's signature authority? I remember you mentioned that last meeting and had some qualifications you needed and wanted to kind of get, get, get settled.
No, I didn't need any clarification on that. I think because the work had not been done, and typically, when you do a contract amendment, there was no reason to have a change order and a contract amendment. So we combined those two. There is one contract amendment that includes the additional streets and the Hillvale shoulder work for a total dollar amount of $948,624.94, instead of having two separate items.
Gotcha.
It's one contract amendment that's, that's doing more than one?
Yeah, and that, no, I, I just needed to remember, but I remember that clarification.
All clear?
Yeah.
Good. Chair moves for contract amendment for the 2025 street resurfacing.
Second?
There's been probably moved in second for a contract amendment for the 2025 street resurfacing. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, opposers nay, starting with District One?
Aye.
District Two? District Three?
Nay.
District Four is aye, District Five?
Aye.
Back to District Two. You must vote, sir.
I know, I know. Aye.
Is that an aye? I think I heard an aye. All right, motion carries four to one. Thank you very much for your hard work, and as soon as we can get that in the mayor's hand, we can get those guys on the job and get the, get the work done. All right, thank you very much.
Harry, if you could get that handy for the end of the week, please?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, ma'am.
Before our finance leaves, I believe we may have those ready for signature this evening.
Oh, wonderful, if you'll bring them to me outside of now.
Excellent, thank you so much for your hard work. I know this was one that, let's call it a learning situation, and we will go through something similar to this again, and we will benefit from what we learn throughout the process. Again, thank everybody involved. I'm sorry? That's an ordinance that goes with it?
Because it's streets, transportation it requires.
All right, Madam City Clerk, will you be so glad to redo this?
An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Stonecrest to amend the City of Stonecrest Pate and Classification Plan, oh?
Wait a minute.
One thing.
Yeah. You have it handy? You don't have it handy, the mayor has it handy, speak now. May I see the clerk, may I see the clerk, Cabo?
Servant leader, play any role I need. A resolution by the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Stonecrest, Georgia, authorizing the execution of a contract amendment for Blunt Construction Company Incorporated for the additional work under the 2025 street resurfacing contract in an amount not to exceed $948,627.94, to exercise a contract renewal for a term of 30 calendar days for the completion of all additional work performed under this contract and for the, and for other purposes thereof.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk Cabo. Okay, that goes with the amendment you've already, I mean, yeah, that you've already approved, for the record. And that brings us to new business. Request to apply for recreational trails program, RTP grant. Strange?
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I am here on behalf of the City of Stonecrest, seeking approval from council to apply for the recreational trails program grant. This would provide funding for the walking trails project for Farrington Road, I mean, for Farrington Park and Salem Park. The total grant award amount could be, it's up, the maximum is $200,000, and they are requiring a 20% minimum match.
Oh, that's your complete report?
Yeah, you want me to read over the?
Oh, no, 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 no.
With, and we're requesting your approval.
And we're requesting approval from council.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any questions?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilman Fa?
So for clarification, this funding project is going to be in our, in our recreation trails program. Is this, is this funding like one of our share used paths, 42 and Salem Road? Do we know which one it's going to, City Manager, so you can?
Madam City Manager?
I do apologize, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is for the internal trails at Salem and Farrington Park.
Are those a part of our, are those a part of our parks plan or trails plan?
Inside of the parks.
Near the path foundation, it's not a part of the path foundation.
Park master plan. And also, class as funding allocated already for the Magnons. You know, you're not looking for any additional.
This, this is for our financial management policy states that any, any grants that we apply for that require a match, we must bring those to council before we can apply for those. And I believe the date for the application is October?
Uh, November.
November one. And so we would like to, again, as she, as Ms. Drain has mentioned, we would, are seeking approval of this item so that we can move forward with the application for these funds.
And I think Councilman Fa was just needing clarification for where the trails came from. So we have two documents that dictate trails. One is our bike pit and trails pedestrian plan, which is the trails that are outside of our parks. Then within our parks, we have trails, which you'll find in our parks master plan. These are from the parks master plan, not the bike pit and trail, because these are internal.
Got, gotcha, so if it's internal, it's parks and rec, parks and rec, outside, got it?
Yep, you got it.
Maybe we can walk in circles, and when I get tired, I don't have to find my way back home. Okay.
Nice restroom to stop at, water fountains and pavilions at both Salem and Farrington.
Sounds good to me. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
Hey, good to see you. So, ask, okay, let me put my glasses on. Answer this question. So ask, okay, let me put my glasses down. Answer this question. As I look through, it talks about the grant terms for two years and it won't come until fall, winter of twenty-twenty-six? So they won't, yeah, they'll do the, um, award notification. Right now, it's stating fall, winter twenty-twenty-six, correct? And so, did Harry leave? Where Harry? Oh, so Harry, that two years means once we get it, we got two years to complete everything, yes? Yes.
Yes, ma'am, but, uh, we, we will be ready as soon as we get the money.
Okay, you know what I'm asking, right? Okay, all right, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, council item is before you and there is no resolution. There is one. Well, go ahead then, let's hear it.
Resolution by the mayor and city council of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia authorizing the execution of a contract amendment with Blunt Construction Company, Inc. for additional work under the twenty-twenty-five street resurfacing contract in an amount not to.
You all found one on each item, but that's okay, that's okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will say, I will state that once the grant is applied for and if we are successful, we'll, we'll bring it back before council for approval.
Okay, good.
With the resolution.
All right.
I was, I didn't think we needed a resolution for, to apply, we need a resolution to accept.
The other item resolution, but you, you're thinking.
You want to sprite?
Okay, uh, council, uh, you still have this item before you for decision. She's requesting to apply for the recreational trails program grant. We either approve, deny, or defer. What is your pleasure? Oh, we're still having discussions on this end.
Only for, yeah, we only have to approve the exception to accept the funds, but we bring it to council for approval if there's a match required. There wasn't a match required.
Oh, understood, understood.
So everybody can benefit from this conversation.
So our financial management policy state that if we are applying for a grant that requires a match, that the council approves the application first. Uh, and then if we are awarded, uh, the grant, then the staff comes back for council to accept the grant funds. So some grants don't require a match, so that doesn't come before the council until it's time to accept the funds. This one in particular requires a match, so it has two steps. Grants that only, that do not require a match only has one step.
Okay, now, to approve the request to apply for it. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman Washington.
I'm sorry. I approve the requests. I, I approve to make a motion for the request to apply for the recreational trails program grant.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second to request to apply for the recreational trails program. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion were signified by saying aye. Oppose is next. Start of District One.
Aye.
District Two, District, sorry, District Two?
Yes, aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four is aye. District Five?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Please proceed with applying for the recreational trails program grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that exhausts your prime agenda. But we can make up for it. We're down to city attorney comments. Have you comments, ma'am?
No, sir.
Sir?
No.
You've been here before, but introduce yourself again.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Earl Turner. I'm one of the city attorneys with Denmark Ashby MetroCardi.
And you perform another function for us as well?
Yes, I also serve as the solicitor for, uh, municipal quarter Stonecrest.
Thank you very much, sir. Looking for great things out of you. The next item on the agenda is, uh, City Manager updates.
Uh, Mayor Protem, I want to, um, publicly thank all of our staff for the great event that they put on over the weekend. We had such a great turnout. Um, typically, I, uh, try to refrain from my remarks because I know council like to talk about event, our events, but I just really want to say to all of our staff who had, um, a part in this and the list is long. Um, but a special thanks to our Parks and Recreation staff and our facility staff for, once again, putting on a great event for our community. And we are looking forward to many more of those. I also want to say that, um, uh, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and, um, we, the city and city staff are having a, uh, several events to recognize that and honor, uh, survivors and encourage those who are, um, battling that disease. So, um, just want to take a moment to, uh, say that that month is upon us.
Thank you. Next, council, District One.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The only announcement I have is this Saturday. I am hosting our quarterly town hall meeting in hazardous waste. So if you can come by or stop by City Hall between one-thirty and three-thirty, we will have some light snacks. And we're gonna host the town hall meeting after, I know everybody's gonna attend that Cola Green Festival. So after that, if you can stop by the town hall meeting, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. District Two.
Um, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just another one to say, uh, just another thank you and congratulations to staff, the mayor's office and overall everyone who participated on screen, in screen on the green on Saturday. It was fantastic. Um, got to hear some good Sunday cleaning music on that day. So we appreciate, so we were very happy to see everybody have, have a good time. Um, get to watch Wakanda forever. Um, so overall, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the city staff, Parks and Recreation, for putting on that event. Um, again, just want to reiterate again for residents in Belmont Hills, um, again, we hear you. We have been very, uh, very much so monitoring the situation and so we will continue to keep, keep up. But if you ever need anything from the city or myself, please understand that you can email us and shoot me a, shoot me a message so that we can resolve some of your issues. Um, for Ms. Colefield, and, um, just to, just to kind of address some of your public comments, we, some of us are aware of some of the things that have been happening along Panola Road. We have been act- acting on it from the ci- from the city side, so processes have been to, have been handled. We are looking forward to adjudication and for a lot of those issues that you have been seeing. So please, just as a general message, oftentimes, we as citizens don't see the work that the city does to address many of these code enforcement issues and for many things that are happening in the area, but they are. And we are on top of it. We are keeping an eye out for it. So please note that you can always rely on us to be able to handle those issues. It won't happen as fast as some of us will like, and I can certainly speak to that. But we are very much so working toward, working towards resolutions on everything and making sure that our city is taken care of. So please note, we are very much so monitoring Panola Road. Um, other than that, thank you, council, again, for passing that Home Rule Amendment, that Home Rule Amendment, and with that, I yield.
Thank you, sir. District Three.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I would like to make an announcement that, um, D-one and D-three, we're having our spring household hazardous waste event here at the city of Stonecrest, thirty-one-twenty Stonecrest Boulevard. It's gonna be from eight AM to three PM. If you have any hazardous waste that you just need to throw away, that you have in your house, that you can't put on the street on a regular, please, uh, make use of our dumpster. It will be here on property, uh, this Saturday, um, September the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. And also, I am also having a town hall with D-one, uh, Councilwoman Tara Graves. So come on out and we're gonna have a Q and A and we'll answer as many questions as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District Five, please.
Live in D-five, September twenty-fifth, that's this Thursday from six until seven-thirty. We'll have a talk with Tammy. You know how we do, be here from six to seven-thirty. It's gonna be some interesting conversation. You don't want to miss it, I promise you. October eleventh, um, before we get back for a work session, we would have had our, uh, part two of our CPR event because these things are necessary. Uh, we'll be here with, uh, Heart to, Heart for Life, um, twelve to three o'clock. Twelve o'clock noon to three o'clock PM. Um, look for the QR code to sign up. I'm footing some of the cost for you because these things are expensive. Um, I can't express enough how grateful I am to have, and I publicly, and I say this not to say that I'm not grateful for anyone else. But when you recognize talent, you have to say it out loud. Ms. Gray in the Parks Department is a quiet storm. What she did again with the cancer event, the childhood cancer event, just blew my mind. Her diligence this past Saturday for Screen on the Green, it was recognized by other staff members, which really lets you know when somebody is really, really doing what they're supposed to do when their peers recognize them. And so I'd like to publicly say, Ms. Gray, I am glad you are in the city of Stonecrest. Stick and stay. Don't you dare go away. I wanted to be a DJ when I was young, but anyway, um, let's see what else. I think that's it for now. We got some other stuff coming up in D-five, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Mayor Cabo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was gonna talk about our sixth annual Screen on the Green Entrepreneur Expo, but it sounds like everybody else has. So I'll leave that alone, except to say that we're looking forward to the seventh annual next year. Uh, just a, a really exciting event to see it transform from what it was, which was just a council district event I had, uh, in Farrington Park as a council member. See it now, one of our largest annual events, uh, throughout the year and just, uh, six short years is really fascinating. And so I'm excited to see it grow each year, uh, and already looking forward to our seventh annual. Um, I will mention that, um, by the time we get back here again, this event, the date will have passed, so I'll mention it tonight, uh, which is October eleventh, uh, is our, um, our next Walk with the Mayors, uh, which is myself and the mayor of the city of Lithonia, Shamika Reynolds. Uh, we do this quarterly. This one is really special to us because Mayor Reynolds is a breast cancer survivor, uh, so we go all out for her in this walk. We will be, uh, again, October eleventh at ten AM. Um, is it at ten or nine? It's at nine, I'm sorry. At nine AM, um, October eleventh, we will be meeting at the Arabian Mountain Trailhead that begins in the city of Lithonia. And then we will walk to Stonecrest Library. We will have an event in partnership with our Parks and Recs Department. Uh, so we're excited about that. Uh, we really want everyone to come out and show love and support to Mayor Reynolds. Uh, she battled through, survived and recovered, and we're so excited to, uh, support her, continuing to support her, but also to be, um, just a champion for all those who are affected and even those who have lost loved ones who were affected or those battling, uh, with it today with loved ones. Just come out with us, enjoy a good time, uh, as we champion and love on one another. So that's October eleventh, nine AM. We will meet at the, uh, city of Lithonia, um, Trailhead. Um, one more announcement, the week before that, um, we, uh, the city will be, um, or happy to host, uh, be the host city for the HBCU Classic where fam U will take on Mississippi Valley, uh, on October fourth. Uh, the game is at the Mercedes Dome, uh, but we are the host city for, uh, everyone except the football team. So all of the auxiliary services, all the coaches, the bands, the cheerleaders, uh, all the training staff, everyone who's not the team will be here in the city of Stonecrest. We will be the host city in partnership with the DeKalb One Hundred Black Men. Uh, so we are excited to be that host city. Uh, we'll be rolling out some announcements of some events in partnership with, uh, the DeKalb One Hundred. Uh, but this is a big deal. Uh, this is, this gets to showcase how Stonecrest, uh, will be able to be a host city for many large events uh, for the metro Atlanta area. This is our first chance to really showcase that. Um, and there's been a, a collaborative team working really hard, uh, to make sure that Stonecrest, uh, is spotlighted and that we are prepared. And so I'm talking to every citizen, every business owner and every visitor, uh, get ready, businesses, have all of your customer service top tier performers ready to go. Uh, if you are a constituent, come out and, and enjoy a good time, uh, enjoy bringing out your family, uh, to, uh, to the events that we're gonna have here, uh, in the city uh, and just really prepare for a good time. Now, if you are one that who doesn't like, uh, to participate in things like this, be prepared to pack your patience because we will have vehicles and cars traveling on our roads. Uh, there will be visitors in town. Uh, so if this is, if this is the kind of event that you don't particularly like, uh, do go to the grocery store the week before, stock up, stay home, turn the TV on, watch us as the game will be aired on television. Uh, but we're excited to, to really showcase what Stonecrest ability is to be able to host major events like this. As we lead up to the World Cup, uh, we're excited to kind of test the waters here. So that's October fourth, uh, in partnership with the DeKalb One Hundred Black Men. Uh, so, yeah, so join us for that. Uh, and again, listen out for some rollouts of activities we'll have on the third, the fourth and the fifth. So, thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Let me just say that there are heroes among us and we don't recognize them as we should. We did recognize a police officer who fell in the line of duty defending public safety at, uh, CDC. And we had a fireman that we show, man, will you be so kind as to reach out in behalf of the firemen who fell in the line of duty? Now, they're heroes and we should recognize them in life, but, uh, for those who have given the ultimate, they should be recognized forever. So.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem. We had staff, um, to attend on our behalf. Um, and I think Councilmember five was there as well. Uh, Master Chief, um, Thant, uh, succumbed to injuries, uh, fighting a fire here in the city of Stonecrest. Um, so although our law enforcement and our firefighters, um, have a calculated risk, uh, you never want, uh, that risk to go, uh, in the direction of losing their life. Uh, so we celebrate all that he was to our community, all that he was, a twenty-year firefighter here, uh, in DeKalb County. And so whenever you see a member of public service, if you will, just give them a nod and tell them thank you for their service. Uh, pass that information on to anyone that you see and hear as well. Uh, it's, it's never, um, you know, a good day, uh, when, when one of our own passes. And so we've had two within thirty days of each other, uh, one in law and pu- and police and one in fire. Uh, so you'll see some of us wearing our red and black band and some of us have a blue and black band and we kind of alternate, uh, to show, um, just commemorating their lives. So thank you, Mayor Protem, for mentioning that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I know we want to take part in the fun and game and the good times, but there are some people who pay a price that we can feel safe with our fun and games. So, uh, with that, I'm going to invite you again to the Cola Green Festival on Saturday. Uh, started at twelve o'clock at, um, First African Church on Salem Road. And also, um, that was the biggest thing I wanted to cover. Uh, I did tell what everyone has said about the Screen on the Green event. Grandkids had fun. I had fun chasing them and it was a wonderful, wonderful event. So I just wanted to offer my kudos as well.
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
I did leave off something. Um, September is suicide prevention month. And that's a hard thing to deal with for families who have lost their loved ones to suicide. I was notified last night about a student, fourteen years old, who took his life. Um, Lithonia Middle School student. But I believe his address was in the city of Stonecrest. Um, went to services yesterday and there was a gentleman there who was talking about his life and I cannot call, recall his name. But I do want him to share his story with folks in Stonecrest for sure. But I just ask at this time, if you all could just keep this family in your prayers and the teachers and the administration and the students. Uh, the suicidal ideation is, it's not just for grown folks. It happens with our students, our scholars. So I just ask you to, um, truly keep this family in your prayers as they go through, um, what they're dealing with. The funeral will be, um, not this weekend, but the next weekend. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments? You have none? Wouldn't sustain the motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. I withdraw.
Again, so moved.
Second? Uh, Chair seconds. It's been properly moved in second. Chair, during this meeting, are you ready for the question? All those in favor were signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.